The special meeting of ISD 361's school board to order. Roll call twenty-four meeting.
Here.
Emily Monarch.
Here.
Ruth Grabaway.
Here.
Ted Saxton.
Here.
Rockton's Ghosts.
Here.
Joe Anderson.
Here.
Jennifer Wendell. Governor Grover.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where the justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to see a motion to approve the agenda presented.
Filled by Rock.
I got a motion by Rock and a second by Ruth. Any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrying unanimous, please, the agenda is approved. Okay, we'll be moving on to public open forum. Have just a quick thing about public open forum. Just so everybody's on the same page. Here in public open forum, board members do not respond. Like you might see at a typical town hall meeting, you're welcome to present to the board. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes. If you exceed the three minutes, I'll just ask you to wrap up and you'll finish up. And that is it. Anything on this matter?
No.
We were gonna do the whole thing with red, green, and yellow things, but I think it would be easier if I just say please wrap up. Okay, well, okay, so we're ready for public open forum. I apologize if I pronounced his first name wrong.
George Nachzak.
Well, that's what I was gonna do it, so George Nachzak. You were out first. So state your name and you have three minutes.
My name is George Nachzak. Here in National Falls Lake District. I have a vested interest in your decision regarding mask wearing in classrooms for over the past fifteen years. I've had substitute taught in various capacities, particularly in the math and science classes. And I need to decide this year whether or not I'm going to pay the fees to renew my short-term teaching license. And I'm very concerned, of course, of all the possibility of being infected unnecessarily with this new course. I have been vaccinated and looking forward to booster shot, but that isn't necessarily going to prevent me from getting ill or from getting extremely serious diseases all the time, but there's no guarantee of that. No, this mask-wearing course is a nuisance for all of us, for all of us. And it's a matter of public health issue now. This Delta strain is very serious. ICBX are being filled up with unvaccinated people that have fallen ill. I believe the statistics are well over ninety percent of intensive care units filled with these types of people, which is preventing easy access for people with other illnesses like heart attacks or having access to these facilities. I have done some reading on COVID strain on this particular Delta strain, and it's much more serious than the first thing that we had. The first strain kind of attached itself to the cells, but this strain is like Gorilla Glue. It really attaches itself and it sticks there, working its way into the cells and infecting people. So even if masks are largely effective, it's better than nothing. And using them can be, so I understand that, but I can't see any rational reason why not to wear a mask. I can't see that mask is going to be spreading the disease anymore than we have with unvaccinated masks. So my feeling is probably prevention, there are always preventions worth probably here with it. But at least can keep the aerosols in our breath from spreading to other students and the instructors in the classroom. I think that's a good thing. So I certainly hope to do vote for having masks in the classroom. It may not be necessary.
George, you have three minutes if you could wrap up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, thank you, to Courtney Frank.
I know I'm gonna go for three minutes. I'm a mother of three. My oldest is in high school, my middle and elementary, my youngest is in preschool. In the last two weeks, I've tuned in to the fight to free kids from masks. It's not just here, everywhere parents are fighting for their children. I've heard about court cases on the radio regarding parents in Florida suing school districts for serving their parental rights to choose whether their kids wear a mask or not. I've seen videos posted on the internet regarding parents in California fighting for their child's need to be mask-free, referring to the treatment that they have received in school as abuse. These are just two specific events that stand out in mind. However, I've read, seen, and heard numerous of other instances in the limited time over the last two weeks. Everything that ISD 361 posted about the decision to require masks has a heavy-handed sugar coating, sugar coating on it. You say that at the last meeting, you've heard arguments from both sides of the fight. You post a survey with optional responses and a paragraph on explanation for the answers that side with your decision to require masks in a single, abrupt sentence. For example, I will undergo circumstances agreed for the answer that opposes your decision. I am here today to say that I was at the last board meeting. You moved the meeting from the cafeteria to the library, which is a smaller room after you found out how many people were on to go. Of the roughly seventy people in the library paid, there weren't ten that were in favor of the children wearing a mask, at least not by the poll by hands that was taken that day. According to the newspaper, there are around a hundred more people in attendance and they overflow and consume. The entire time that I was at the school that day, I met one person that was in favor of the mask requirement, and that one individual didn't even have any kids in school. I only left the meeting when you took the item addressing masks off the agenda and removed the public forum altogether, which tells me that after I left, you literally couldn't have heard any arguments in favor of masks, at least not on that day. I took the online survey and although valid points remained in the favor of mass answers, there are also valid arguments for not requiring masks, but those points weren't even touched. You are observing as public servants to the children who attend the schools in this district and to their parents for that matter. You should be open-minded, fair, but it seems that you've already made up your mind and you don't really care about how their parents believe or what's in the best interest of the children. Requiring a mask is a problem, a big problem. As parents who go home and spend time with their kids, we see it and we are not okay with just letting it go on. I want my son to love school again because he loves to learn, and school and learning are supposed to go hand in hand. I don't want any of my children to have to receive another letter from their teacher saying that they wish they could give them a hug or that they barely recognize the kid because they saw each other without a mask on. I'm in favor of making masks optional. That way, those who would like their children to wear a mask are encouraged and those who would not like their child to wear masks are also encouraged. I know several people who have told their children on behalf of ISD 361 solely because of the decision to require masks and your seemingly unwillingness to hear parents' old. I would be lying if I said that I haven't considered alternative options for my own children. However, I would like my kids to continue to go here and last or until I feel that my children's future is in better care elsewhere. Now, I do-
You have three minutes if you could wrap up, please.
Now, I do have some sympathy for the board members, not just here but everywhere, because I know that there is a finite decision to be, there isn't a finite decision to be made on this matter. No matter how you decide, there will be someone somewhere who is in agree. However, I personally believe that this decision should be ultimately made by the parents, majority rules. I would also like it to be known that my children will be going to school this year with the knowledge that they will have my full support whether they choose to, choose to wear a mask or not. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mark Lasar.
My name is Mark Lasar. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, distinguished board members, and Superintendent Grover. First off, I'd like to thank you for your service and this opportunity to share my thoughts and opinions. I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider your decision to mandate masks for all students, teachers, and staff for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I know that you will not make this decision lightly and that you will do, do what you think is best for the students of the school district. Further, I'm encouraged by the survey recently conducted to obtain the actual opinions of the parents. I will not repeat the same points that I provided to in writing at the last board meeting in regards to mask efficacy and the risks involved with masking. But I will reiterate that I am strongly opposed to mandating masking, and I believe the best and most common sense approach to the masking issue is to allow parents, individual teachers, and staff to make their own medical decisions, you know, by masking optional. I would also take this opportunity to clearly state that future mandatory COVID vaccination should not even be considered. Once again, these are profound medical decisions with potentially grave medical and health consequences, and these consequences are reliably documented, especially for school age children. Again, parents and individual employees need to make these medical decisions for themselves and of course, in consultation with their own family, medical, and healthcare professionals. So in closing, I thank you for allowing me to speak, I thank you for listening and considering my perspective and comments.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Anita Shesby.
Hello, I am Anita Shesby and I'm here for myself as well as for my son and my daughter-in-law. I am not a parent, but I am a parent, so I would like to provide some views that I have. It's from what I've seen and heard just throughout the years with children, they come to school, especially this last year, they don't wear a mask, but then they go home and I'm not gonna paraph, I'm just gonna paraphrase because I'm just changing my mind every day, but you know, what I see is they go home, they see their friends, they see their family, they go out to dinner, everybody travels, and then they come to school, they have a mask, they sit and unfortunately suffocate all day. I travel a lot, so I can relate to wearing a mask for a long period of time. So that's kind of where I'm coming from this perspective. Some children, they are not vaccinated with other reasons due to religious reasons, religious reasons, excuse me. And I think particularly this mask thing is it should be an option. I certainly respect your decisions, I really do. I just wish there would have been the opportunity to hear from a lot of parents that have children, and you all, most of you have parents at school too, so I know your kids are bright and that they don't want to wear them either. And I do know that you probably have it at heart with kids, but I still go back to the point for me is it should be an option. What I've seen is over the years, many have been sick flu, H1N1, SARS, Mumps, chickenpox, measles, et cetera, and have deaths, but mask mandates have never been imposed. So I'm a little taken back, you know, with how others country as well as everyone in this world is, you know, partaking with this mask mandate. When summer began after this whole year of COVID, children as well as adults began to flourish with happiness due to the ability to socialize with friends and family. Again, many took trips, hosted weddings, gatherings, went shopping for the July, and so much more without a mask, and will continue to do so outside of school. I do believe certain things have helped our community to stay healthier more than others. I mean, we have a very low rate from the last year and a half. What I would like to contribute that to is our schools are top-notch sanitized, we know that. We have proper ventilation. Parents, families, and school staff, they have been incorporated, they have incorporated stringent protocol of hand washing. I believe all parents and teachers see the care. Social distancing, it has relaxed, however, I believe most have still awareness and are careful. I do believe that, just from what I've seen. Children have been taught the proper way to cough and sneeze, exception younger kids because, you know, they're gonna sneeze everywhere, but they do it correctly. If a child's not feeling well, parents and families do not send their child to school for safety and others. I truly believe that. Nobody wants to make another child sick, it's a child. Parents never send a child purposely with any symptoms, not that I'm aware.
One, you have three minutes if you could wrap up, please.
Yep, sure can. The list goes on, but now I'd like to propose ideas for the masks to be optional versus mandatory. Do temperature checks prior to entry, hand washing, sanitizer stations, adequate supplies, paper towels, soap, water, disinfectant, et cetera, et cetera. Post signs that are visible all to promote the above, and my personal recommendation is provide, provide an opt-out waiver to parents who choose for their child not to wear a mask if the school board feels that it is necessary for legal reasons. In closing, I oppose mandatory masks for children, and I hope this will be revisited by you with a vote to make optional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tracy Newtak.
Hi, my name is Tracy Newtak, and first of all, I want to thank all of you guys. I know all of you guys personally, former boss, we're being here provided for, granddaddy. I had no intention of speaking here tonight. I'm very passionate about this subject. I myself, I announced that I have PTSD and for various reasons, and my former boss can probably attest to that. I have a petition here, we have approximately twenty-five pages of this petition, and it's got people, I'm gonna give you guys a copy of it. Also, I would like to make notes, yeah, this should be the parents' choice. This breaks my heart, my mother, my father, my kids, my niece, my sister, everybody graduated from my fall side. I'm still wearing nineteen fifty-two brand, my mom's, I'm very proud of it, but I'm ready to move on and start supporting another school if my grandkids don't have the choice. I've got one grad out of this, had high anxiety and diagnosed, and it's just, it's horrible what this does to her and the fact that they can't breathe, they can't see each other, they can't. People that are learning how to talk, and I know a member in the audience that they've got a child that is hard of hearing, how can you teach somebody how to unscapable? Again, this should be a choice. I'm not saying take it all away completely, but I am saying this should be a choice. And we're talking about, about everybody else who wears a mask. I walked into the school today and some of the North West kids out there, their masks are down here. They're not properly wearing the masks. And again, we had to close the door because of all these wonderful girls out there having a great time playing volleyball. How do you think it would have been for them if they were wearing masks during that game? Again, my daughter is not here because she unfortunately has a couple of kids that had been made set short-term or short notice. I do want to make a special point to address Mr. George Nachzak, if I pronounced your name correctly. This is a gentleman that I've got several witness reports on the back of these petitions of him attacking Anthony Wolden at the last meeting out front, and I also have four witnesses that have came up to me at the Little Fork FFW and had seen this from Nachzak at an auction several days afterwards.
You're supposed to interrupt here as opposed to the comments of the board, that's part of the public open forum rules.
Understand, I apologize.
Please, let it happen.
Okay, but I'm just saying, a lot of people have a double standard. Again, you wear a mask here, you don't wear a mask here. This person wears a mask here, doesn't wear a mask at an auction. I'm asking you guys to please listen to the parents, listen to what everybody's concerns are, let it be their choice. Again, I Falls is a great place to live and it's a great, great, great school system and I just, these kids, they're being brought up in a fear, it's a total fear. My biggest fear when I was a child was my parents dying. That's what these kids, you're putting into these kids right now, is if you don't wear a mask, your mom and dad might die. There are people that have compromised immune systems, I understand that, I appreciate that, I acknowledge that. Again, that should be their choice to wear the mask or not.
So can you reach out three minutes if you could wrap up, please?
I, I absolutely will, I thank you very much. Sorry, I got a little bit off course, like I said, I was not prepared for tonight. I just, I want to thank the board for having us here again. I don't think this is over and you should reach out and possibly survey a little bit more and see what parents, grandparents, and everybody thinks about this before an ultimate decision is made. So thank you for your time and please let it be the parents' choice.
Thank you. Do you want to, do you want to pass that petition to Mr. Grover?
Do you want? Yeah.
Oh yes, I've got copies. Put these statements on the back of the assaults.
Well, that's not the case.
No, no, I realize that, but I'm just saying, here's the petition.
And one more, first of all.
I don't have a speech prepared, I had one last time and it didn't get to be heard. I did send this email out to Stover and he sent me an email back. I'm not gonna read the whole thing because I don't want to get pulled through it. It says additionally, I do not support overreaching mask mandates or vaccine mandates in our schools. I believe that we must trust Minnesota to make the decision that's best for keeping themselves and their family safe. It should be up to families to decide whether or not they want to take the vaccine. Medical decisions are highly personal and must be left up to the individual. I echo that a hundred percent. Nobody up here is a medical professional, I don't see anybody with a medical degree. I feel, I have the right to make the choice for my child, not anybody else decides a medical decision for her. You're not gonna tell me she's gonna have a vaccine, you're not gonna tell me that she's gonna wear a mask. There are issues that people don't need to know about on why she doesn't want to wear a mask and why she chooses not to wear a mask. This is not up to the school board, this is up to the parents, this is a medical choice. This is not a choice that has been made in the best interest of the kids. There are multiple mental health things that go on. My daughter was so different last year than she has ever been. Her attitude changed, her personality changed. Throughout the summer, being unmasked and interacting with other children on a normal basis, she's starting to be back to herself. It is absolutely ridiculous when you think that you can just say, everybody's gonna wear a mask, I don't care what the parents say, because they're our children, they are not your children. You may have children as well, if you want them to wear a mask, that's your choice. These are my children, this is my decision. I do not, I won't allow that to take away from me. Also, there's, from a reliable source, I will not say names because it would be inappropriate, but the survey that was sent out by the school district, they, it was voted by the parents' majority that it was up to the parents whether or not to mask their children, but was told that Ted Saxton said that it doesn't matter, again, it doesn't matter what the parents think. It was my opinion that's, or not my, not even my opinion. I have always been under the understanding that as a public official, you are to represent us and to hear us and not to just be like, I don't care what you have to say, this is what it's gonna be, that's dictatorship, that is not what we need.
That concludes the public open forum. Moving on to the discussion item. The discussion item I've written is discussion by school board with regard to possible adoption of one of the low resolutions for twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty-two opening of school safe learning plan, survey results, and other matters pertaining to the start of the upcoming school year. I would like to comment on that since from the last special medical ass meeting, the last special meeting we had, we had gotten some different guidance from our lawyer in regards to how to run special meetings. And so, the reason why instead of having three separate action items on the agenda, that there's three different options is because as long as the scope of the action items we proposed are within the realm of the meeting topic, we can modify how diversions. So anyways, I'm just saying after all the board member knowledge and everybody's here because it's a little different and we've done things in the past and we've taken our advice from our lawyer. So anyways, I will open it up to board members for discussion. Would anybody like to speak first? Rock?
I've heard a lot, oh, sorry.
You have your mic?
Yep. Okay, I've heard a lot of you people talk about how it's your choice and your children. Absolutely, it's your choice and it's your children. However, nobody is talking about the fact that this is a two-way, two-way street. My, wearing my mask helps me some, but you guys, wearing your mask helps some as well. This is about lessening the chances. The chances are a little less when I wear a mask and even more, even lesser when you guys wear a mask. And that's why when kids go to school and they try to protect themselves, yet other people are not wearing masks, then that increases the chances that it will spread. And so it's talking about chances, and when we talk about speed limits, we know that people who speed, the chances are increased that you're going to get into a car accident. Therefore, we have speed limits to decrease the chance that there will be car accidents. We have to help each other to decrease the chances of this happening. And so you may be able to walk away and say, I'll do whatever I want, I'll speed if I want, but if your car hits my kid, I'll never go home the same. There are over four hundred children that have died. This is Russian roulette. We don't know who's going to die and who's not. It's not about the people who are only just safe, those who have compromised immune system. Perfectly healthy people have died as well. I don't want anyone to die. Coolers, trailers, full of dead people, that's not a made-up story. The people are dead and they're not coming back. How would you feel if even one child or one family member in our district died and you could have done something about it? Can you then go home and say, I'll do what I want, I don't care about them? I was a specialized teacher and I was always working to try and give people, to show compassion for those in need. Now, you guys may not be in need or think you will be in need, but you could be in need and some other people may be in need. Can you not reach out, step out of your comfort zone and try to understand? This isn't about you protect yourself and I'll do what I want. This is about lessening chances by letting that virus not be sucked into your body when you're not wearing a mask, growing in your nice warm body, getting stronger, and then rendering even vaccines useless because the virus is mutating. We all are in this together. When I, I own a group home, I spend time worrying about what's gonna happen to my staff if they get sick. Who's gonna take care of my residents? When I have residents who get sick, I have to turn my group home into a hospital with full-blown quarantines and personal protective equipment. It becomes like a war zone. I don't want that to happen to anyone. I care about your people as much as you hopefully care about mine. I think it's important that we think about each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Rock. Can I repurpose that for a second? No, you can't. I'd like to just see some evidence. Okay, well, it's, we're in our public forum, it's got the board discussion point. Would any other board member like to speak? Would any other board member like to speak?
Ted, do you want me to hide anything? I know the survey and stuff.
Yeah. Although, I just had something quick and it was just something I saw online and it was about, not validating anything I've said here today, other than I wanted to make something clear, was that people, I've seen a lot of argument being the CDC calls it a recommendation. And from a legal standpoint, there's few people who can mandate masking. And that would be when the president did, when the governor did, or anybody with local jurisdiction like the city government, the county government, or the school board. So the CDC itself, the most it can do, it must get an authority by its governing body, which would be the legislature, the government underneath the emergency executive order. The most they can do is highly recommend something. So anyways, good job.
Okay. A few things, and I'm just going to, in no specific order. First of all, I would like to say secondly, thank the board for your input. I'm going to say many personal discussions, conversations over the last month. I know there's tough decisions to be made. It's easy enough that one or ones that have to make the decision. In this case, I'm going to say you are front and center. I appreciate the input. I thank the public and I truly mean this for being passionate and very, I'm going to say proud, very knowledgeable. I'd like to listen in a simple manner. I'm not saying everyone's going to agree, but whether it's this matter or anything else that we're going to deal with, I do appreciate that. So thank you for that opportunity tonight. I'm going to say there's not an end to whatever decision is made, whether it's made to make masks optional, whether it's made to make masks required or something in between. That's going to be the decision tonight and, you know, on from now, we could be in a different spot. So I just say that and I'll keep that in mind. With that, I think I would like, again, I think most people are aware, we did put a survey out. The information, I'm going to put it out here in a minute. It will go on to our website and we manage it as public info. Just so everyone's aware, there were, I want to say 561 responses. And again, question three had an issue. I'll take responsibility and apologize for that. And then talking about question three probably not be valid because of, I'm going to say, probably the first two, two and a half hours, there were like 150 responses and it required a response. Some people put that in the comments. Some people went in, we got it shut off, so it didn't have to have a response. There were, I think yesterday, Mr. Rober and myself, there were about 15 people that had made, put in a second survey and put in their comments that they redid it, so we pulled their first survey out. And then there were all 15, we put it out, we limited it to parents. Okay? Could be, if families have, I'm going to say a split family, that's fine. You know, this could be multiple entries for that family. You know, mother and stepfather, father and stepmother, that works, but they have to be listed. So there were, and I'm just going to be honest, there were some teachers that put comments in and don't have kids. They were pulled out. So it got down to above 521 responses. Okay? And so, I just throw that out there for the information for what it is, it is what it is. Exact number, and I didn't, approximately, there's about 1,400 possible respondents. And again, that doesn't mean we have 700 families, because again, there's split families that have, you know, multiple, what we're going to call parents or guardians. So that being said, let me just, I'm going to stop sharing this. And again, this is all public and will be put out. And again, not saying it's perfectly worded, it is what it is. It was done to get some input, the board, I apologize, I didn't print it in color. It gives the data there as far as, you've all seen the survey and questions.
Mr. Rober, can you please speak? This is my phone.
Oh, sorry. The data will be, we will put it out on the web, make a link available. Again, all the comments will be available, but we're going to take, like I say, names, emails, phone numbers, and obviously the other. Okay? So again, that's what the promise was, but we needed it to somewhat make. So I'm just going to say people from outside our school community weren't voting. So the board has it there for the most part. Like I said, I'm not going to read it. The first question, roughly 61% in favor of the optional and the required is 18.2. And like I say, you can look through it. The second question, which has, again, was focused on preschool piece. Again, for the most part, and it's a bigger pie, 73%, those are the people that, I'm not going to say, it doesn't apply if they don't have kids. I'm not saying their voice doesn't matter, but we want to know if you have kids in preschool, what's your choice? Majority there, masks should be optional is what they're saying. You know, this is of this people's survey. The third question, again, the intention was good to, you know, try and get some info. Would people be even supportive of when we talk tiered system? And I have a couple of examples, not saying it's set stone, but it would be something where, I'm just throwing it out. If we were saying lower moderate cases in the school, the county, whatever we wanted to put into, you know, the criteria, maybe wouldn't mask. But then if you got to moderate or if you got to substantial or got to high, they need required mask. And again, there's many different things we can look at if that is what person wants to go do. That's what we're talking about tiered system. Again, unfortunately. Sorry. I apologize to those online that should be shared now. Yeah, I'm going to go up to the top. But again, going back to this question three, I'm, like I said, I'm not going to say I'm a data guru or person. I'm just saying I think there's enough question that I would question because people were forced to answer it. So I would like to almost say, I won't pay a lot of attention to the tiered system or tiered question. I'm just going to let it sit there so that people online can look at it. Again, this will be all, we'll put a link out to the website and have it. I'll put it under the news tonight or feed one of the two. The fourth question, and I'm just going to scroll down here. It talked about looking at potential training to administer rapid COVID testing. I agree, and I just want to clear out there, no matter what, just like last year, we had slightly tests available. Parents have that choice. We're just looking at, would people be interested in allowing some type of test? No kid's going to be tested without a parent's right or choice or, you know, whatever you want to call it. Permission, let's put it that way. It's just that the stage is rolling out. I think there's four different types of tests that are going to be available to us. And are we interested in accessing those and having them available? And so, it's a piece we're trying to get a little bit of information on. And the same with the one on the bottom. There's a fair amount of time and effort into the screen. And again, just so the groups are aware, we checked temperatures with, I'm going to say, the Qlik monitor last year. Very few intentions, I'm just going to say. Temperature is asymptomatic, it's not overly, it's not that LPL. And so, we're just interested in, you know, how much will parents be willing? And I think the parents that did screen and, I'm going to say, who all this asked last year before the kids got here because it is one step in the learning system. So the site of the comments, and again, the comments will go online. That's the survey or whatever it's worth. A couple of other things I just wanted to throw at the board. I hope whatever decision is made tonight, that the board will allow, and I'm going to say, our team. And that includes administration, includes the nurse, the RN. I'm going to say includes everyone. We had a safe learning group last year that, you know, worked on our safe learning plan. And I'm going to ask that the board somewhat allow us to run with and back your decision, whatever it is. And I guess where I'm coming from is in a board of seven people, which I highly respect and appreciate all the input. We're being pulled in a lot of directions based on everyone having a different, you know, opinion and thoughts. And I guess I'm asking the board, give our team a little bit of, what would you call it? Green to develop that plan. And like I say, we can come up with a way to monitor it, give updates. There's a variety of different options, but I don't want, and I say this with utmost respect for everyone sitting here. We can't have everyone, you know, micromanaging every decision. And like I say, we're open to input and we'll do the best we can to serve the board. But we have two days before school starts, roughly. You know, two more in-service days, need to get info in the hands of teachers. They have a safe learning plan, like they say, the bulk line. I think the group and the staff did an excellent job last year. And I expect no matter what the decision is, we'll do a great job. And again, I would say you never run on board, you know, every decision, for instance. And I'm just going to give you an example. Question came up, what about concessions that in order to support you guys? Yep? We need to be able to make a decision. And if the board wants, you know, us to change over time, we can, okay? You know, there's question, whatever, we didn't have, you know, homecoming. You know, time will tell, we're not quite that. But I just want to try and get back to, you know, kind of let us, you know, run back in your decision. And now it's changed, but I really can't, every decision we make, you know, get the board involved. Does that make sense? I just, again, I, or we work through it, don't get me wrong. And I never want to go against what the board, you know, if they, I would say, if they decide. But we need a little bit of grace if you will, in the next little bit to get that control. From administration team to the nurse, to the transportation, the coaches, or whatever, teachers, parents, we're a great group. And when you, whatever the level of board is, you just need a little bit of grace to get it in line. And like I said, all in favor of getting input and amending as we go on and adjusting, if that makes sense.
Hey, right there, that topic right there. Just some things, MSBA board are, we'll do this too, obviously, but MSBA hearing, we've all been through at least phase one, phase two, if you could do it. The first thing you learn, or one of the first things, is that you govern through policy, right? And so, I can't go and tell a principal what to do. I think it's a long time ago that that was overspoke a lot more. And I think it's very important for a functioning board to rule or to govern by policy and by majority. And so, I know a lot of the plan that they're coming up with is based off of our decision that we made gathered right now. Depending, at this very moment, we'll see what happens later, there's a mask mandate in effect. And so, that's what they've been basing their plan off of. And I definitely trust the team, but the other thing is, we actually only manage one employee, right? And we manage them as one seven, each of us as one seven. And that's Kevin. And Kevin is responsible for managing his. And that's, again, MSBA phase one or phase two, right? So I think there's a concern about overspking somewhat because of the pressure that's on us, I believe. And so, or the passion that we have for the school board and the school institutions. So I don't know what the appropriate thing to do is. I think it's up to the board, but we can also ask Kevin and his team structure the report of some sort. Or we can have additional work sessions to see what other policies that might be affecting. But again, it's not like micromanaging things like you can sell soda that's not popcorn, those type of decisions. And also, if we end the lead too much and not governing by policy, I think it makes for a less effective board and a very stressful staff as well. So I don't know if I would like to add to Kevin's discussion topic right there. Does anybody else have anything related to discussion really of, regarding the topic of tonight's meeting?
Are there questions? Like you have us in a, putting a stop to your ask for enrollments? And I said that she can.
Yeah, I got that.
If there's something you can, you guys are both here, is there questions of any one of us?
I think for me, like still, I am gearing my decision on safety. This isn't the whole year. This decision wasn't made as, for me anyway, as a whole year you have to do this. Right now, we have a neighboring school that has two sports teams out already with quarantine. And if they were in school, we'd have a whole bunch more students that were in quarantine. Even if we could start like two to three weeks and get our staff reports then and say, okay, well, are they wearing masks? Are they wearing them properly? How is it going? Is there any, you know, issues from the masks? And just slowly work together and build that way, I think we could really, I mean, beat this versus not.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, you know, I think that Mr. Rober and entire staff, administration have done a valuable job last year in handling a very tough situation. And I also see that this is a whole lot different than what it was last year. So I'm totally in favor of, you know, a little bit of that as we move forward. And allowing Mr. Rober and the administration to have that power to make those decisions and make changes. Depending on your trend, what's trending. I can tell you today, I learned that Christian Thomas, our office working, there are 30-plus new COVID cases that have been developed. So it's not going, it's growing, it's not going down. And I get my information from factual people, from professional people. I'm not going off to somebody and sharing it with anybody or, you know, it's not, it's not a church save. It's not church, it's not gospel. And we have the base on data, we have the base on science and real data coming from professionals. Because our job, our position, our responsibility is we keep all the schools in this district, all of them, every last one of them, safe. And sometimes that means that we have to make tough decisions that are not popular and are not big fun like everyone. We understand that. We respect that and understand that. But we are charged with the responsibility to make a decision there. So whatever the outcome, which I don't know, is going to be, hopefully, everyone will respect that, support it, and help support what is at your heart. Any other board members?
Yeah.
All right.
I want to take a couple seconds. Some of the things I'll say are going to sound like I've learned from other people. But I usually want to thank everyone that's come today and I want to go to that, share their voice. Because that is part of this process and hearing people and getting people's thoughts, whether it's a decision that we feel like we have to make one way or another. But hearing that is a part of what we are as a nation. So I really want to say thank you for everyone who helped me today. And I also want to echo a couple of the board members and say about Kevin and leadership team last year. This is a situation, whoever's decision is made tonight isn't a decision that is forever decision. We don't even know how long the decision will be for tonight. This is a situation that I feel like is so ever-changing, just like last year. Where the administrative team had to be very nimble and had to be very flexible and changes came very quickly. So I think turning some of that ability to take organizations from the administrative team is very important. Because we can't, nobody wants that management when people have the same job that really is the best place to conduct operations. So with that, I think, you know, the safety for me also is to carry the mantle in terms of keeping everybody as safe and as alive as we can. And that's, I mean, that's some of the, I think that there's just so much information in there. I don't know about what this brings and what this service of. on, and what this brings, and what this ever says.
Thank you. Similar, similar comment to what you just said. I remember going through the last school year, and we had, we had a lot of unknowns going into the last school year, and we really didn't have, and not just us, the nation at that point, we really didn't overdid it, and we're extra cautious, including a lot of the action we're not taking this year, for various reasons. And I, I think we're in a similar boat, where this year, with some of the variants and some of the, how it's transforming, I think that we don't know once school is back in session, what, how it's really gonna spread or affect it, but I do know, in a month, we're gonna have millions of data points to help guide our next decisions that we make, if we change our decision, or modify what our plan is, or anything like that. And to me, it's, it's a very safe and sorry type of scenario, where if we went into it, we required the masks at first, maybe that, maybe this year we might have that, built a variant, isn't that contagious with the kids, as we're saying, because we'll literally have every school district reporting these numbers. So I think, just like everybody else, doesn't want it to be permanent, nor do I, and so I think this masking option, or mandate, will give us that opportunity to figure that out as well. Any other board members?
Yeah. So I did put out a survey personally, which I'm sure most of you responded to, and I thank you for your comments on that. I know that it can't be reviewed publicly here, and the district did decide to put out a survey, which I appreciate that as well. In both cases, tiered, a tiered system is, seems to be in most in favor, by at least eighty to ninety percent. So I feel like there can be a compromise to one extreme or the other, that we need to work together, and we need to come up with reasons why, and data, and things like that, to confirm each step, and what we're gonna do in each step, and how we're gonna be safe in each step, if we're low to moderate, or if we're high, and get parent input, and get details around each of those scenarios. That's something that I personally would like to see, and I'd like to see more involvement. I'd like to see a meeting once a month with the board, like The Woods does, and a COVID update, and be communicating to parents more. I think that that's important, and that's one thing that has been suffering or lacking. I think we, we need to have more communication between all of us. So that's my viewpoint, I feel like we can come to some common ground, and we can make everybody, hopefully, feel safe in our school district, because that's, that's what we want.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Welcome.
Well, we're members of the union.
So, what changed your mind from being on vacation, passing it all over on Facebook and Hotspots, to today with our children?
Oh, the meeting's order?
Oh, just a question. I don't see how you can care today and not care with your own kids a month ago.
The meeting's order, any, any other board members would like to comment?
I could. As I said before, in a meeting, if we have eighteen percent of the parents who are afraid and need the help of all of us to, if they follow the science and know that the science says it takes both the person wearing the mask and other people wearing the mask, to protect people, if eighteen percent are afraid for their family's lives.
Can you put that on the slide, or you got that statistic?
Eighteen percent of people are not afraid, I'd say, we gotta go with the people that are afraid for their lives.
I disagree.
Well, and I, I, you know, I understand that for us, and I respect that. I guess my thought is, is part of being afraid is the unknown about COVID, right? I mean, we don't know a lot, we don't know all the facts, we don't know, I mean, this is still unknown to even the professionals. There's so many unknowns, and so that's what makes it kind of almost fearful, and that's why I think that us working together, and formulating a plan that everyone feels comfortable with, will alleviate some of that unknown and that fear factor in this, is my hope.
Yeah, unknown and death, death is real.
You could die in a car accident tomorrow, but you still drive to work every day.
We, we respect any time during the public open forum, please respect our discussion time during this discussion part of the agenda.
And I'm, I'm not saying that I, I want anybody to die, that's not it at all. I mean, and especially, you know, our children, I have a child, never, but again, I think that we need to be somewhat logical about it too, and understand, okay, what are the facts? How are we gonna be preventative about this? What are the steps that is gonna help maintain the school's safety and maintain that? And okay, these are steps that we're gonna do, and actually have a plan moving forward, and communicate that plan going forward. But that is, I'm just one seventh, so.
Right, but, and no, and we all are just one seventh, but isn't, isn't the plan like to be proactive versus?
Right.
I mean, we want to make sure that.
And that's part of it, yeah.
We wanna make sure that we can get everybody in the building, that's the biggest thing, is we want all the kids in the school. We're not, last year was way different. This year, everybody's back in the class, and we wanna start out slow to make sure everybody's safe, that's all it is. Once we see that it's going great, once we see everybody is healthy, then we can slowly stop, take, you know, take the masks off, watch the numbers, work together that way, but having us make that huge decision, I mean, yeah, it's easy for me to say for my own kids, if you don't wanna wear a mask, fine, but when you hand me fourteen hundred people and say, here, make that decision for them, like, that's what we were handed, and that's what we had to do. It wasn't to make anybody angry, it wasn't to make people leave the district, I mean, it was, it was a really hard decision, and we made it, and I myself, I'm standing by it, I'm sorry.
Well, and I think that that's fine, like, you can say that, okay, the first two weeks, you know, this is what we'd like, and going forward, you know, we're gonna do this, or after the first week, we're going to look at data each week.
But I think that's what we decided last time, is that Kevin would have that information and could pull that at any time.
But that part wasn't communicated, and that is part of the problem.
Agreed.
Yes, it was.
Well, it wasn't communicated to me.
No, it wasn't, it was ten, saying that nobody's public opinion matters.
You know, as far as, we have not set up, you know, just like last year, we tried, and I'm just gonna say, we plan to do the same thing, you know, a, what you wanna call it, COVID tracker, or whatever you wanna call it, I just sort of decided we have to also, I'm gonna say, false high school. Yeah, we will do something similar, but as a board, are we gonna come together, you know, weekly, or are we gonna come together, you know, every other week? And you wanna, you know, print your report, I mean, that, I don't think we've decided, because I don't have anything on the calendar, let's put it that way, oh, that's that forward. Are we gonna analyze, that's from day one?
Right.
Are we gonna notify, again, as part of this, what we're gonna call learning plan, safe learning plan, whatever, there will be notifications again, and it could change depending on how the year goes, on the plan right now, as it stands at the elementary. If there was positive case, I'm just gonna pick the last aid, and we'll notify all those things, you know, depending on what decisions made, you know, there could be different ramifications on, maybe in quarantine, not quarantine, whatever, the same at the high school, we're gonna have a lot of kids here, it's not quite as easy as calling twenty families or twenty-two families, like the elementary class is. So we, we, you know, call system, the high school, and notify we had a positive case of ninth grade, and that's not all we can say, or seventh grade or whatever. Yeah, we use some, you know, he's, I wonder if my kid was a wrong number or not, but we just, you know, it's gonna be too hard, we feel, to, again, track every kid as well. Quite a bit easier last year, we had less than fifty percent, we know we care, and that's different this year. So, as far as the year's system, you know, not pushing, I'm just saying, you know, if interested, there are districts that have done something similar, you know, I agree, then we will be modified, if at some point that is, you know, interest, you know, if we can, for example, and both, there are differences, and then, most of the, I think I'd look at for, you know, are gonna be based on CDC, you know, the five levels, but also then, you know, how to take into account the global transmission. You know, and that's a piece that, if you recall, last year, we started out with counting numbers, you know, that was the state's, I'm gonna say guidance, while we found out, you know, most, or a lot of places blew past those numbers, and they didn't have much in school at that point. So they threw that system out, and it was wrong, it's a learn and learn type deal, and it came down to, you know, the trans in the school, you know, if you're seeing spread, I can't believe there was a chunk of you that didn't see much, there was a chunk where we had, I'm gonna say, a blurb, and there was some spread, you know, and just the way it is.
I have a couple questions, whatever, down here. Um, we adjusted, oh, I don't remember when it was in the school year, and we posted, started posting stats to the website.
Yeah.
Is that still part of this year's plan?
Correct, correct, it's not, but now, because we aren't in session, but we foresee it, and the first, and we clearly will start getting it back up, and here it calls, it's a pop-up, and it'll be a, you know, if you don't wanna work it.
I was curious, because I was, communication was out of last year, and that was one of the things that we did, so, that's still happening. The other one would be, um, the safe learning plan, I don't know if that's what we'll call it this year, but the safe learning plan, I know we've had to kind of wait on some of this stuff, based on, because masking changes some of the, some of the plan, and so my question is, when will the plan be made available to the public, based off of if we make or don't make a decision tonight? Would you think that now school's starting up pretty fast, that's why I'm just curious?
For the most part, for the most part, it's fairly ready to go, and again, it's no different than, I'm just saying, any of the surrounding districts, you know, if the public knows this or not, many of them worked with a company called IDA to write, write those safe learning plans, and if you looked at the majority of the districts in northern Minnesota, they were very similar, okay? And so, what we've done is we've taken and cut pieces out of it, for the most part, because things are less restrictive, and so for the most part, it's modified based on this decision, or whatever the decision is, so it's, it's not gonna take a huge amount of time, but it's also cool, and document the, you know, I guess, questions come up, and we clarify things, you know, and we keep them, we did that last year, you know, added, took parts away, changed parts as things change, so I mean, it's, it's shorter than last year, but it's not gonna take a huge amount of time, you know, we, we need the answer, so that we need, mainly on Thursday, the staff, we can go over and make sure they're aware of, you know, the main components of it, and.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, I think we need to make a decision tonight, because teachers are waiting, I mean, they're, they need to have some guidance on, you know, what they are to expect, or how to prepare, and those types of things, so I think that's important.
Any other board members? For the discussion part of that? Okay, and none, that concludes the discussion part of the board meeting, for the action item, I will read it in a second, I will reiterate what I said, the versions can be modified, or have no guidance on special meetings, and also, if no decision is made, then the previous decision that we made is stamped. So, I'll read the first action item, and then I'll maintain a motion, and you may appoint two for version, or modifications to that version, that you so choose. Action item number one, adopt health and safety measures, resolution for the 2021 to 2022 school year. Version, motion by, and second by. So I'll maintain a motion for whichever version.
Just, just so if I can, just so everyone's clear on version A, B, and C, and again, they can be modified if someone wanted to, you know, change something, we gotta put something out as a starting point. Version A, I'm just gonna say is the mask, or, I'm gonna make sure I'm right, or, mask optional, okay, I think that's the gut of that resolution. Version B would be required for, I'm gonna say preschool through grade six, and then optional for seven through twelve, and version C is the required, again, you say required other than, you know, people that have exemptions. And any one of those could be modified, if someone wanted something changed, maybe any one of those, we don't want it for preschool, but we want it for this, or that, you know, that can be changed, but we had to have something as a starting point, so.
So I maintain a motion by a board member.
For, for any of the versions?
For any one of them.
Okay. I make a motion that we adopt version C, require universal masking of all students.
As it's written?
Yes.
I have a motion by Rock, could I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Tony, this opens it back up for discussion for version C. Any board members who'd like to add any more discussion items, and I covered most of the things again, but Bruce?
Yeah, I would, if I could, if you would, if the board would give the power to superintendent and administration to revisit, and who doesn't need it as they have children, if that makes sense.
And for the most part, if you re-need a version A or C, it's MSBA's resolution, and so it does give the power, I'm gonna say, to administration, if, I'm gonna say, an emergency sake, with communication with the board, you know, to adjust, and make, so it's not going the other way, you know.
This is, are you saying that that doesn't need to show in that motion?
It's in the resolution.
Yeah, so when we, we have some additional guidance, that when we follow the question, we'll say that the revolution has printed, and then everything within that revolution is adopted based on that version. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Any further discussion based on the motion for option C?
Thank you for your time, I have to go.
Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote, do I need a roll, I'll give the other side motion?
It's.
I mean, not a motion, no.
No, we're good.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries five to one. Action, action item one, which continues to adopt it.
Against the majority.
Moving on to. I'll maintain a motion to adjourn at six oh seven PM.
I'll make that motion.
I send out a motion by Tony, and a second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.